All right, good evening. I'm ready for the clock to inch to 6:30. That's okay, it is 6:29 PM on September 27. This will officially call this regular meeting, the board directors' reporter. And we'll begin with our lives.
I believe it's two of us in North America and two of the Republic, which extends one nation.
So let's do a quick roll call, and we'll start at this end of the table. Just again, I want to kind of start to practice recognizing pronouns. I love that. I have a feeling that's great. Carly, you're birthday then, Dr. District One, and I'm feeling a little tired today.
Edna Morris, District Four, and I'm Reddick.
Dave Larson, E M, District Five, where are you?
Jan Boerjack. And District Two in Wenatchee.
Thank you so much. Glad you are joining us virtually this evening, Jan. And welcome to all of our guests. Of course, we have Dr. Hunter with us as well. As a reminder, if you're here in person, make sure that you please be signed in. So, Edna Morris, you two are our... Is that okay, Rem?
No, I don't mind at all. I just haven't found it yet.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you so much.
And our agreements are to stay engaged, experience discomfort, and be vulnerable. Speak the truth and expect and accept non-closure.
Just a second. Letting acknowledge and pull that.
We at the Tech Police School District acknowledge that the land where we teach collaborate, learn, and play. It's a traditional land of the first people of Seattle, the Duwamish and Muckleshoot people, past and present. And honor with gratitude the land itself and the Duwamish and Muckleshoot tribes. As a public school district, we have the responsibility for the stewardship of this land. And we recognize the Duwamish and Muckleshoot people who have been living and working here since time immemorial.
All right, so we will move to approval of this evening's agenda.
So move.
Seven seconds. Eddie, Owen Baker.
Hi.
Hi. Is approved, so we'll move to our first opportunity for public comment this evening. So as always, there are several ways that you can give a public comment. You can do it in person. There's a sign-up sheet in the back there if you would like to do so. Or if you are already at a virtual meeting this evening and would like to offer public comment, you can raise your hand or type your name in the chat. Just a second. So does this look like we have anyone up for public comments? So just as a reminder, you will have another opportunity at the end. Yeah, if something comes up in the meeting, some discussion that you want to offer some comment or some insight around, we definitely welcome that at the end of our time today. So we'll move us into our reports. This is a report-heavy evening. So we'll get us started with our student representative report.
Does it?
Yeah.
I started when I started on Monday, so it was pretty fun. A lot of public. Now I have three days. I have you now, but everything else is right. Something about representative, I was like, I was looking into maybe finding a junior representative for the next year, one senior this time. So, and I was in an academy system, but some students, this one person came up to me and was like, "Hey, are you just a representative? Are you involved in that?" So, you know, it feels like it's pretty good that some people are interested in here. I've never been good at thinking about it.
Or no? Thank you so much. Okay, I can jump in. So just a few kind of big things to report. I, as you all know, in our last meeting, we approved the task force for safety and inclusion. So I brought together a small group of folks that are going to help with the selection committee, the selection committee to build that committee or that task force. So the communication on that has been just a tiny bit slow, and that is totally my delay. So, but expect that something will become in very soon with some details about how to get involved, how to apply to be a part of that task force. Anybody in my phone boxes in the next few days. And so really excited about that work going forward, particularly it's really timely. I think in, you know, one of the reports that we're looking at today even around sexual harassment and reporting and reviewing that, it just became, I think, even more, just became more aware of the need, I think, for the work of the task force. It's been a do, so I'm really excited about that. I had the opportunity to spend some time working, really thinking about how we're doing our work as a board. So starting that conversation today, we're thinking about board presentations and just our whole process of how those presentations come about and what are in those presentations. So I had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Bori Shae and Dr. Herman, and then excited to really kind of bring that conversation to full board tonight, just to really make sure that we are really being responsive in our work, being the most effective that we can be, and also really collaborative. That's what I'm really hoping to do, is just increase the way that we're collaborating with each other and doing it really again, responsible in relational way. I also had the opportunity, actually just this afternoon, to speak with Adam Kay from the P S E S D around a really incredible opportunity for us to continue some work that we've been doing with the other roadmap, with other districts around us in the roadmap region. It's really focused on elevating youth force of color, youth of color divorce in and leadership. So I'm really excited to hopefully partner with our student rep and talk to them about that the next few days. And Dr. Bori Shae and some other folks at Showalter to just really increase how we are creating more opportunities in our districts, sustainable opportunities to really create leadership opportunities throughout our districts. I'm really, really excited about the possibility and the potential for that. I think.
For the superintendent's report.
Oh, I skipped that, did I? I'm sorry.
I thought we were just going to go down the line. With that. So during the superintendent's report, a couple of things to highlight. One, last week, we finished up the open houses, which were just spectacular. Each of the schools had an open house. Turnout was really good. Lots of parents, students, staff. It was just really a good opportunity over the last two years. So we had enough to talk about and highlight a bit of our strategic plan. We have more of that coming up in the future, opportunities, so there'll be more communication out about that. But it was just good to see everybody, and I think a lot of the parents and students were excited to be back in person, to be able to see their teachers. For some people, you know, it had been a little while. So those were really positive. Also, had a couple of opportunities to get some communication back about the superintendent student advisory committee that I'm starting. And we have a couple of students that are interested. I'm connecting with them hopefully this week. And actually, through some of the open house opportunities, heard from a couple of other students who might have interest. So I'm just trying to follow up with those students, and then we'll get started with that. And hopefully, we'll continue to get good buzz about that and have other students be able to join, which I'm excited about, and how we can tie that into the middle school and all of the opportunities. And then the last one I'll talk about for tonight is just, we've been working on that R O process that we've talked about for a while, that's been going on for some time. We had what was called the community collaborator collaboration. It's like a group that we had, we invited students, parents, staff. And we're able to talk through a lot of those pieces. The students, I have to say, had probably the best attendance. I think they were, every single one of those provided absolutely outstanding feedback. Really good insight to talk about kind of what they were looking for, what they would want to see. So we're going, continuing through that process. I should have a more comprehensive update by the next point.
I also attended some open houses. It was very fun to see the parents and the students thriving. And I had a great opportunity of volunteering in a classroom today, finally getting back into those classrooms. And it just happened to be a second grade, so I was especially enthusiastic about it. So that was, that was good, and I'd like to be able to do more of that, so.
So a couple of things. So we had the first, or I guess introductory, meeting of the parent advisory group, which parent advisory group, I think, has been going for a while these, but this was about parent advisory meeting. The administrators and a couple of us board members were there. And it was, I thought it was really good because it, you know, brought up a lot of, we kind of touched on a lot of issues. It was, this was just kind of an introductory. Let's listen in here what's, what some of the parents are thinking and so forth. And a lot of the issues, I mean, I don't think there's new issues, but what it does is it kind of helps prioritize things in terms of if we get, you know, enough parents and students and so forth, thinking something is important, then kind of should raise it up on the priority list. And of course, it started with what they call transparency, which, you know, rapidly goes to communications, which obviously we've been working on for quite a number of time, quite a while. You know, they were talking some of the same things. We talk about interpreters, mailings. You know, so that's actually, I spent a fair amount of time afterwards talking to one of the members, and she was particularly interested in the communication issues. So hopefully, I suggested that she get in contact with Perry Martin and kind of, you know, as we think about how to kind of roll out some kind of communication plan that's going to serve all the different groups that we need to communicate with, it would be helpful, obviously, to have their, their input on that. So that was one of the issues. Another one that came up was, was I-ready. This is one that we hear about quite a bit. I think, and this one also, I think, in my mind, kind of goes down to communications. There's a lot of students that don't understand why. And Dr. Bori Shae had actually spent some time, and I was trying to, top of her head, throw out what was, you know, why we do that and what it's about. And, you know, it's, one of the parents brought up the issue of students that just kind of fly through just because she's, as I say, boom, 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 boom. And, you know, there's kind of a myth, he kind of mentioned, well, he thinks 50% of the students do it. Well, we actually know how many, what percent of the students do that. But I asked that at one of the board meetings, like, I think for the reading, it was like 10%. In math, it's like 6%, so. But for me, that's, that's really an interesting issue because what it kind of raises a flag and said, well, if a student, a student does that, that means they're disconnected from their edge learning process, you know, they aren't, they don't feel this. And so then, you know, then we should have a whole process to go, all right, figure out, get in touch with the student, what's going on, blah, 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 blah. So anyway, there's, that brought up the whole issue of, you know, and I think maybe we're going to have a start on this. Yeah, preparing students, yeah, on tonight's board meeting is how we communicate that effectively and how students come to understand what it's about and that it's where they're going to be and so forth. So that was interesting, I think, around that one. Another issue that comes up a lot, recess, you know, not enough, not handled right. You know, there's a whole, whole set of things you could talk about there. Another one was hiring, you know, some students, some parents said they wanted to be, you know, part of the hiring process for teachers. Sounds like an interesting idea, worth looking at. Another issue that came up was curriculum, and that's one I'm going to spend a little time talking about. Particularly, the sighting was the reading curriculum, which doesn't seem to be working very well for our students. There's been a lot of literature written about that one, and, you know, that's one we need to examine and take apart. Some people mentioned Hi-CAP, that's another one we talked about last time. A lot of issues around how we do that, how you do it well, it's not that easy. Anyway, so I just wanted to shout out to Marion Abdo and Julie Heard, who are the staff people advising to put, pull that group together because I think that's going to be a really valuable group as we move forward. So the other one I wanted to just briefly comment was, so the Roadmap Project, which is the South King County District's, that project published some data on career and technical, so, college. Yeah, college technical college, career, CDC, what's that symbol, CDC?
Career and technical.
Career and technical, okay. It's basically the community colleges, although some of them used to be like two years now, some of them actually four-year degrees and so forth. But anyway, it was comparing other, the districts in the south end in a couple of ways, the percentage of students that are actually enrolling in college. And as it turns out, and this is graduation year 2019, we actually had the highest percentage of students, like 60%, that were, you know, graduated from high school and then enrolled in one of the current technical colleges, which that's a shout out to our career and college and career staff of the foster because they work their pets out. And it shows, we came in number one in all the districts in South King County. And then the other thing they looked at was, and this is a little farther down the road, but let's see, oh yeah, I was also going to point out, that's for the group as a whole, but in terms of black students, we were also number one. So that's a good, in terms of all the other districts in King County, at the highest college enrollment. And then a little farther down the line, the other thing they looked at is outcomes. That is, did they graduate something to get them, you know, in there? It's another thing to get them graduated. And it turns out, for black students, we had the highest graduation. So that's, or the highest percentage of students that actually completed a degree within three years, I think. So that's another one. That's a shout out to the staff of the classroom in terms of preparing them to the point where they can actually succeed in college, which is an important indicator as well. So anyway, a couple of good successes for us. Director Boerjack.
Thank you. Just a few things. I also attended a lot of the, well, all the open houses. And the P T O meeting at Cascade View. And my, I was very impressed with the, with the turnout for those. I loved walking around and talking to the teachers about how excited they are about the year as it unfolds. My concern is the language access. I know at one of the meetings, at least 60% of the people had no access to what was being spoken. And that's really difficult. We just have to figure out a better way to handle that. Also, went to a tennis match, went to a couple of football games. Haven't made it to volleyball yet, but I'm looking forward to it. And golf, our teams and our coaches are working hard right now. The parent advisory meeting, I was there as a board. We need to figure out whether we want to do this on a rotating thing or whether we want to make it an actual meeting because are we going to have two of us there? Are we going to make it so that all of us can be here? So I don't know, Carly, if that's something you want to look at or, or how we want to handle that. But I also have started up tutoring at, in my building. Right now, it's me and four very excited, active students eager to learn. So I'm looking for more support of anyone who wants to come in either as a student to learn or as a tutor to help. And then the, the last thing I wanted to mention was that the football team has been coming to the pantry to volunteer on Saturdays, which is a really great thing. They have a great time, and the coaches have really been affirming that. The other two things that I think are interesting is that Race Back, Race Back sends six students every Friday. On Fridays, they take a portion of their day, and they are out in the field. These are juniors and seniors, and they're, they go to different internships around the community to learn about businesses or whatever. So these six kids are going to be at the pantry every Friday, learning about the operation there. And I just think that's a great experience to get them out of school, out of the school building, and experience business, community, all of that. So I would just put that out there, something we might want to aspire to. And also that the mayor's interns are coming to the resource center tomorrow. And I'm, I'm not sure if those are college or high school students, but that's another place that people can get some real-world experience of how you run a little business, how you help your neighbors, your community, and what's going on in Tuck Willa. So let's see. I think that's all I have on my list. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Director Boerjack. So to kind of get us back on the actual order of the agenda, sorry about that. I love that.
Sam is here too.
Yeah, I just saw that Sam is here, so I'd like to hear from Sam. If you have anything to report, Sam, and then we'll jump to the COVID-19 report after.
Okay, um, yeah, I just have a few things to report on. One is school starting, I guess.
I don't know if that was intentional, but we lost your.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, what, could you guys hear me?
Yes, now I can.
Okay, yeah, um, so I think the transition to school starting has been really smooth, like sports starting up again, as well as we had, we had an open house, which I think was successful as well. Many people came. And I also, and what's happening in school right now, right now, it's homecoming. We have our first homecoming since 2019, which is exciting, and that'll be taking place October 8th. Yeah, no, yeah, October 8th, from 8 to 11. And next week, on Monday, I believe, we have a multicultural assembly happening at Foster. And yeah, we also have like hallway competitions as well as class competitions within our school to like pump up everybody's spirit before homecoming, and next week's also our homecoming game. And yeah, um, I actually had a few questions as well. I was wondering, um, what is the strategic plans? Because I think one of the people the board hired came in our class and talked about it, but I, I wanted more information on what is that and like, what are like the steps with that in place? And yeah, that's my main question. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I wonder if I definitely want to answer that question. I think it's relevant. Is that, is that okay? If you kind of like revert back to superintendent report for a second.
So we talked a little bit about that in the beginning, but we'll be reaching back out to people to have opportunities to follow up about the strategic plan. So with students and parents and community and staff that we have, so the, during the open houses, that was to raise some awareness that we have there. And then the strategic plan is really trying to focus in on the areas that, as a school district, we're trying to kind of channel our resources to and make some changes over the next four years.
And I believe there's now information on the website, right, about both the strategic plan and everything is still in draft form, the strategic plan as well as the SMART goals that we're in the process of gathering and put around. So I'll try and find that direct page and then add it in. Okay, thank you so much, Sam. So then I'll jump to the, back to the COVID-19 report.
Hi, am I audible?
Yes.
Hello. So our cases have been steadily low in numbers. I've been noticing there's been a bit more staff and ratio compared to the student cases that we've been seeing. The vaccination clinic, there's another one coming up on October 13th. And myself and Erin are working with St. King County Public Health to make improvements to the events. Like, for example, for now, we're serving the vaccines to those who are 18 and younger, and we're trying to get it so that we'll be able to make vaccines available to families and also hopefully staff eventually. And then finally, Governor Inslee's emergency proclamation is ending in, on October 31st. And so in November, we'll still expect all protocols in regards to case reporting and exposure notifications to our families and staff to remain. But the thing that will end is the vaccine requirements for staff volunteers and indoor contractors coming onto campus. So that's something for the COVID response team to kind of go over and determine what we want to do about that. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Spencer. One, I think I know the answer to this already, but just curious, the folks that we have had supporting us through COVID, Ms. Spencer being one of them, all those folks are going to stay as a part of the team at least through this school year? Or are we anticipating that, like, as, as restrictions get, I mean, as the proclamation gets lifted, that we might not need those supports anymore?
I think the plan was to have that in place, and then I think as we dialogue with the teams to figure out what we do moving forward, I think we have a budget to zap those people throughout the year, but their responsibilities may change a little bit. So, but we do plan to have that in place. Conversations for sure, as we kind of get to that, and if the emergency proclamation is the agent, figure out what our next steps are going to be.
Yeah, I think this is, you know, just will be, is an important transition. Make sure they're communicating really well, right, about what's happening, why, what shifts might look like. Yeah, we've got, because we do have a month before that changes, we have the opportunity to really have some intentional conversations with folks about that. Moving to a new stage of pandemic. Okay, thank you all, and any other questions, comments off? All right, so we'll move now to the consent agenda. So they move. Check out. Go do all the second. All right, all in favor of approving the consent agenda?
All right.
Possible that Jan's thumb is up, but I can't see Jan, so. Okay, great. Also, thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to move to the board this second. There are two items, one in board presentations, and then the W A S, the general discussion. So with our presentations, I know Dr. Herman sent over just some notes. These are really basic notes from a meeting that we had. It was really our first connection point about what, you know, how we want to see presentations evolve, just the process for presentation, the process for questions, just kind of the opportunity for us to really think about leading up to the agendas and how we're really, so kind of what we were thinking about and the way that this is broken down. And again, these are our three brains, which is why I know, of course, important to bring it to everyone, to get our collective thoughts. So we're thinking about like essential items, kind of being like foundational to every presentation that comes to us. Like what are the things, kind of the high-level things that, you know, no matter what the topic of the presentation, these are the big pieces that we want to know or have some, some information around. So I definitely want to have, have some brainstorming around what's missing from this list, or certainly there probably is. Or have some some information around. Um so I definitely want to have have some brainstorming around what what's missing from this list, or certainly there probably is. Um um and then we had some written especially about. So I guess maybe just kind of start at the top of the list um and start with essential items and. Um kind of what what you think might be useful to add, or if you have any questions about what's already here.
So um for me, the the recent equity toolkit, I mean that it it isn't necessarily. Part of every single presentation, but I suspect it will be for a lot of them. I mean, you have to kind of look at it and see what, you know, but to me, that's um. You know, as on a presentation or I was listening to somebody at Bellevue talk about. How they're doing their version of the equity and they they have a just a little worksheet questionnaire, which would in our case would correspond. Thanks to the rubric questions, for example, and say, you know, you just have to fill these out. You know, if it's if it's relevant, then I mean to the to the presentation. So that's, I guess that's one, the one thing. That I probably add to that.
And I and I guess like what? How would how would we determine, or I guess the team, right, the determine when that one pager when that would be applicable?
Yeah, I don't.
I think it's gonna be more often than not.
Yeah, I would think so, yeah.
So the the pieces typically as we talked about in the past, like there will be times where. Uh part of using the recent equity toolkit is that there's not always necessarily solution. It's elevating. Kind of the challenges that may be associated. So let's say we're doing something that's a compliance issue. A better report and in using uh the resident good tool that we noticed that it. Has some challenges with our favorite community that might not align with what we might think we would want to do. So that then calls out just some of the challenges that. It's like, there's not much we can do about this, but we're elevating. So that people know we are also aware of it. There are some things that you like have conversations with ones later to see if you can change language. But um that's usually what it is. It doesn't always necessarily present a solution. It just also raise elevates or raises um some of the challenges that may be associated with within the topic. So those are some situations where I could see that that might do that, but. Um ideal, yes, just seeing how this, I I would think almost all of them in some way, shape or form would be.
Yeah, you know, limited budget, just say if if you don't think it does, then question one is. Yeah, why not? Yeah. And then, you know, go from there. Yeah, so there'd be at least a. You know, we thought about racing equity on every one of these topics. Yeah.
I'm wondering if uh language supports would be something that we would want to put in that essentials list. Always asking what language supports will be necessary. Yeah, so that it's inclusive for everyone.
And obviously, I know some people. Need additional time to process all these pieces, but tonight, obviously, not the only time you can have this. So any additional feedback or people are thinking about things. You know, more than happy to receive that input too.
Yeah, Director Bulljack, you said that that just kind of made me think about like, you know, communication, I think is such a critical uh thing that we we talk. We've been talking about and we know that being improved on already and want to see that continues. I I wonder, you know, I think kind of as a part of that. Like language supports that are placed, that are needed. Um and you know, I mean, I think it kind of goes into some like the timeline or. Um but yeah, I think just what the. For lack of a better word, communication process or plan, but something about like. How are we gonna ensure this all technically, this is the recent equity toolkit, how are we gonna ensure that we're getting the information out to the right people? In the right language, all of those types of things. Um so one of the things that I guess we kind of talked about, this is my own uh opinion, but I'm but I'm open to y'all. Like the template of like how it looks, uh it doesn't necessarily need to be the same. I think that it's interesting to see the unique flair that comes. From individual reports. I think what's more important to me is like the content that's in the report. But I also can see that there's value in like, you know, having a report. You know, that like has some structure to it, right? And so they can kind of can be easy of reading and things like that. So what are y'all's thoughts? About even just the way the presentations look or how the information is presented?
Yeah, the thing I was thinking about that one is um. And this probably has to do with data analysis is. And it also kind of has an impact on school improvement plans. If we're looking at data, you know, and hopefully when we get a start uh smart some smart goals with strategic plan. We need to be looking at the same data over time, you know, because if you present. You know, topic and then look at one set of data and then the next time another set of data. And the next time another set of data, we can't, the problem is we can't um see how we're doing. How we're progressing over time. So there needs to, I mean, it doesn't mean you can never introduce new forms of data, but I think. You know, once particularly once we get smart goals, we should have some continuity so we can see. You know, we say we're doing this because it's gonna have an impact. So what's the impact? What's the measure? And are we actually seeing that impact? That's kind of the um the question. And it's, yes, it's probably particularly relevant for school improvement plans. But even, you know, I don't know, for for the district's smart goals as well, any kind of smart goals, we need to make sure that we're seeing them. Each time. Yeah, the exact format of the template, you know, I agree with you. If it looks kind of similar, that's good, but it can it can vary a little bit.
Um sort of the thing we kind of reflected on is um you're really thinking about, you know, when a presentation is a question only presentation. Versus presentation where, you know, we can engage in a little bit more of a conversation. Um you know, I think. Again, you know, we all have very different styles of how we process and intake information. Um I struggle with like with reading all of this and really being able to. Like questions come from me as I'm talking about something or hearing. Um and so, you know, I think there there is value in. Particularly some of the things that we're getting right now as question filled in presentations to interest have like induce some element of. You know, in interaction. Um so kind of what we had talked about is, you know, um. Uh we have agenda setting meetings and and kind of at those meetings, we're talking about and making a decision about like based on the item. You know, what might be the best presentation mode? Um so I guess kind of the the biggest question around this is, are there particular types of presentations that you think would be best done? Kind of more alive uh setting, also keeping in mind that we're we're really, really, really interested about how we're using the work sessions. To really like get into the nitty gritty of things so that the board regular meetings can kind of say a little bit more high level, right? I know that we want to be in like like, oh, I want to understand like the the, you know, to some degree the weeds of things. Um but you know, and so I think balancing that, so keeping work sessions as a way like really dig into those. And then leading into the items that are on the the board agenda.
I would say if it if it's something new to us. It should probably go on the live agenda. If it's a report that we've had before and is an update. Then it makes sense to keep it just as a report.
Yeah, I can tell you going back um why we started the kind of questions only presentation is that. We were having uh presentations that people would come in basically just read to us in the powerfully, which. And you know, I mean, we can all read, we all. So the question is, yeah, to, yeah, I mean, but at the same time, we want the, you know, the discussion about, you know, the the meat of the of the item. So that was really the reason that we went to the present uh. You know, questions only presentation, try and shorten down, because we used to go to like ten or eleven items. That just exhausts everybody, so. But anything that that will help, you know, that we can absorb and then also have a meaningful discussion, that's what we want.
Yeah, and kind of what we talked about too is there might be some where it's kind of a mix, like a data report. We get the data report ahead of time, we can still ask our questions, but then there's like the 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 component of what this really looks like. Um you know, it's kind of more of that um that interactive. Um what does this mean for us? Um and then just kind of the last thing is we've got that the board tracking sheet. Um that we're been really utilizing, I think, and it started to utilize in a good way. I know it's been really helpful for me as I'm meeting with Dr. Herden. And um about things, about things to put on the agenda, really kind of help keep keep some of that in line. And I think we can also use that. As a way to help really kind of keep, like, you know, there's a topic, what are the really big questions that we want to know? Um not that the questions that are in there are gonna be the only things that we want or expect or anticipate. Um in, you know, in in a presentation, but you know, at least I think I just want to. Get as much as we can, our intentions of what we hold for uh out so that, you know, so that it it just again becomes more of a. Process of transparency, you know, just really making sure that we're helping everybody do their work.
And maybe including the rationale for.
Yeah.
Decision making.
Yeah.
Sometimes that rationale for those decisions given to staff makes a huge difference.
I'm gonna add that to the essential items. Right. And then the other the other last kind of last component is that Dr. Herden and I talked about it, you know, we really. Want to make sure that we're setting everybody up for success in in this space. And so like if something's not ready, um. We can pull it from the agenda and we can say, hey, here's again the things that we need. Um and then we'll try to get it next time. Um yeah, what kind of what are y'all's thoughts around that? And that would be like a like a Monday morning type.
Yeah. The only other thing I was thinking on this whole thing, it'd be as this should probably be part of ultimately the operating agreement.
Okay.
Because otherwise, what happens, we start developing these these little uh projects and then all of a sudden we have about five different things. So if we can incorporate them into the operating agreement, you know, we can find kind of balance, that would be helpful because they have one place to go.
Yes. Great. So I think with this, we'll probably follow up again with Dr. Breach, Dr. Herden, and then um kind of follow back up with the board. With the kind of what we flushed out a little bit more. And and of course, as everything can evolve and change. Try it out. Alright, that's awesome.
So this may be really quick. So my intention, so the the general assembly of the, I should say, school directors. Is going to be meeting on this Friday and Saturday to go through all this this big book of all the different positions and. What, as I said last time, um my intention is is basically, if you go through each of the positions, you'll see a. A pass or do not pass, which is recommendation of the committee, either the legislative committee for legislative positions or the resolutions committee for the permanent positions. And my intention is basically to vote their recommendations. There's a couple, sometimes uh you know, there is some interesting discussions and I will change my mind. Based on what I hear the discussion is, but for the most part, that's not my intent. So the purpose of this vote session here was just if anybody had. Any particular items that they wanted to, you know, have a, you know, talk about and, you know. We could talk about a vote on or whatever, then we can do that. Otherwise, I'll just, you know, turn it through. Like I say, it's a. It's kind of like a ten hour marathon, but. Virtual and anybody who, you know, you can come in anytime during that that period, you can log in and see what's going on. There's only one person that has the voting. I'll have the voting ones. If, you know, if there's something that you wanted to say to the group, then we could exchange voting privileges. That can be done. So anyway, the purpose of this one was just to see if there's any ones that people wanted to talk about at all. And then next time I'll come back with a list of um the the next exercises to prioritize the top ten. And I'll come back with my recommended list of top ten and then we can review that. And we have, I think. Next board meeting is on the eleventh and we have to get that back to the by the twelfth, which is fine. So it gives us a date and, you know, anyway. So that's the intention. So if there's any, any, if anybody actually went through. It's a monstrous book, but. If there's no discussion, we can.
Well, I did not go through that.
Yeah, yeah, no.
And.
That's why I gave the spreadsheet, which was kind of the high level.
Yeah.
You know, it's kind of scan, oh yeah, I'm interested in this one, then go look at the details, that's kind of, but. If it all looks um fine and you trust me to do it.
This is funny, you get spit in.
But and we can, and I guess we'll talk about priorities next time, so. Okay.
Thank you so much for spending your two days doing that this weekend. Um okay, so now to our question only presentations. And just kind of go down the list, any additional questions on the financial forecast?
Yeah, I guess the the question that I have on that one is um. So I mean, we seem to frequently go this through this process at the end of the year of. You know, I mean, there's a fairly significant move in the fund balance in six point seven to four point nine. And I mean, I've asked this question for years and I'm just trying to kind of maybe ask it again is. My understanding is the reason we have this big shift at the end of the year is that's when you kind of true up the books essentially. And so. Um and, you know, it would, I think I've asked it professionally before. You know, in order to avoid this kind of large swing, could we true up the books quarterly or monthly? And I think the answer to that was, well, Skyward doesn't really work that way. I don't know. What's your perspective on that?
You potentially could, but some things happen in August that we're, we don't necessarily know, right? Like we know that for sure that there'll be um extra hours or additional hours, but the difference between um that if if. They can be charged for categorical, which we can um uh you know, get reimbursed by the state first if actually hitting. Just be a dollars or um or the money that we get from, you know, like our um enrichment.
Oh, yeah.
So that's usually where the 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 major shift shift happens. But um one thing to realize, I mean, yes, we went from six point something percent. Four point nine is that the net is eight hundred ninety thousand dollars. I know that's still high.
Yeah.
But that speaks to how much we received and recouped with our um federal capital dollars that we were reimbursed for.
So I just kind of, is there any, you know, system changes that we could do to or that could be done? To, you know, get that eight hundred ninety thousand down to a smaller number? I mean, you said it's kind of. You don't know till August, there's somewhere some hours go.
Right. So what happens is is that for the month of month of August.
Yeah.
And then the month of September, and then the first week of October, we're still accruing back. And some of those items that we are accruing back are um are encumbered, right? So they're already accounted for and then there's some things that may not have necessarily been accounted for. So between that number and I would say the first week of October, I don't see a huge shift.
Yeah, right.
There.
Right.
Um but that is more accurate.
And and why does that do? I mean, why do we not know about that stuff earlier?
Uh.
I'm just trying.
I would just say that just there's a lot of professional development that happens that's not necessarily um captured and uncovered. So it would be more of maybe looking at um historical trends, maybe inflating, right? Of what we potentially hope to effect, but I don't want to over inflate, but obviously, you know, you don't want to go either way.
Okay.
Yes, I will make sure to.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that hopefully that's, that that could very, I could see that being something that you kind of experience more years. You kind of get a feel where where things go, okay. But yeah, because we are, I mean, obviously, we were on track to hit our six percent and then now we're off. So I'm gonna go. Okay, thanks.
And just to clarify for for other people who are tracking, school districts end their fiscal year August thirty first. So most people think of a calendar year, but in the school systems, we end August thirty first and the process of reconciling. The books and where things are, that's what Ms. Birdson and her team do for pretty much September, going into October to make sure that's all that.
Yeah, and I've always just kind of, I mean, there are accounts. Yeah, and I've always just kind of, I mean, there can be really nice to kind of spread that out. So because I know you guys get consumed with that function and kind of September, October, November. And I don't know if it's if there's any way to smooth that out over the year, maybe, I mean, like you're saying. If if a lot of the PD takes place in like in August, which I guess it does, yeah, because that's summer. Then, I don't know, maybe, yeah. It's just a matter of, uh.
Right.
Take a guess. Okay. All right, thanks.
Uh, okay. Um, if there are no other questions on that one, you know, what questions people have on the redistricting update?
So, yeah, I mean, this looks. Looks good to me. I guess the only thing that I was, um. You know, and whether we think about this, I guess, well, this would be for a future, which I guess we could change. I mean, we do have the option to go to at least, I think the law says, two at large.
Maximum.
So we could do one at large or something and which might have some advantages. Obviously, we can't do it for this particular one because we need to, it needs to go through a lot of people, but, um, we should probably. Have that discussion.
Yes.
To see if we're going to do that and then and then start up whatever process we need to do to get that going, if that's a good way to do it.
I I agree. I think that, yes, one hundred percent. Um, so thinking about that, like being a valid measure, there are parts that we want to. Do I have any idea like what, does it matter what year?
You can, no, you can do it kind of whenever there are four times of the year where school districts can go out for an out measure. So February, April, August, and November. Um, but when you go out for a measure, like we typically do, uh, on most. Many school districts do their bonds and lettuces in February. That's the ideal time. Um, so usually ballot measures come out there because it depends on where your position is placed on a ballot. So February is a less crowded time. Um, and passage of measures depend on number of turnouts and historical turnouts to the last one. So November can be a really crowded ballot. So sometimes school things can be, you know, on page two or three or four, depending on how big the ballot is. And then April is typically when school districts must go out again if they weren't able to pass something. Um, so it kind of depends. But for this one, that we could totally explore which area might work best. Because this would not be a fiscal ballot manager. This is more of a reorganization.
And this is one we clearly want to get input from the community on, um, which be a little tricky because I'm not sure most people. You have to do a fair amount of communication to get people to understand what this is. Um, so, but, you know, we definitely want to hear from people. And and make sure they understand what the the pros and cons of doing, keeping it the way it is versus having one at large, you know, person, whatever. But I don't know, we, it's because we don't seem to be finding people from the third district.
Well.
So far, although.
Yeah.
That hasn't been, historically, we, you know, it hasn't been an issue, but what is this thing?
And interesting, I mean, interesting news. New potential, um, we don't think it actually opens up. A whole other neighborhood, for sure. Um, and then extended by.
Yeah, I mean, our existing districts, I mean, District One is. Is long streaky, which is a little interesting, but anyway.
So I guess when, when would even be the best time to just even start talking about that? And then there might be some other considerations too, but.
Yeah, I would look at just kind of the whole landscape of what we're thinking about. And then obviously, we have to go through this process.
Either way, yeah, yeah, for sure.
I would say spring is the brilliant. Um, to start the engagement conversation.
So we will look into maybe having that lunch.
Yeah, and that'll be. Yeah, starting the conversation next year at some point. Um, so because, yeah, we were on a deadline for this and again, we would. Maybe know what we'd be known about. So, um, this is like the path, the immediate path forward with intentions to really think about what it could look like. Okay, um, any other additional questions on the accreditation update?
Now, did I read somewhere that the high school was accredited at this point, October twenty fourth? And is that announced to the, is that communicated to the community?
Um, we will be talking about that because we've got a timeframe of that doing the accreditation process, so. Yeah, I mean, the whole figuring that thing out was kind of interesting because the company that took it over, I don't know why they didn't know that. We were already excited and they would have already done that, but.
So the the report that Director Larson had found, that was from two thousand nineteen, right? But.
Who is accredited? Is that?
Yeah.
Oh, no, the.
The one that said we did.
Oh, yeah, that was, but something that, um, was done, we get the leader, leader, who's.
Yeah.
Somebody did an audit of Buster High School.
Previously.
Yeah, and that that's where they said.
Okay.
Did we weren't accredited. And then I went and looked on the E S D website and they listed. The accreditation under the old system, which was basically everybody in South King County except for Seattle, Tickle and Cuddle Way.
We had to find the actual. We found it, you know, so that was, that was good.
Okay, so the P S, P S D site was just incorrect?
It must have been.
Yeah.
That we were, we are accredited.
For the twenty two, twenty three.
Through twenty twenty four.
Okay.
We will be updating.
Yeah, my, so that was done under the the E S D process, the old one, A S C, whatever involved.
Is that A S C D or something?
Yeah, something like that.
About the previous track that.
Oh, here it is. Yeah, leading edge advice.
So if we've been accredited previously, does that make the new process a little bit more reachable?
Well, I think the new process is fine. I mean, we've, we've been talking about it, Dr. Boras, so. Um, I think, you know, the accreditation process has a lot of positives associated with it and we have been accredited in the past. And I think they have a good program on that. And the thing that's different about this one is looking at all sorts. Uh, and then it's. So I think it fits into a lot of what we're trying to do with the lineman, kind of strategic planning, all of that, so. That that is, that would not have been the case previously, as previously just was thought.
Yeah, that's the E S D site. It's it's just high schools that you're recording. So I think it's, doesn't seem like it's typical for, you know, all schools to do a whole thing, but. Not that, I mean, it could be a good idea, right? And that's, yeah, and I guess, I think you were just answered the question of whether we. Should have, you know, a board policy. I mean, the state says it's optional. And so, but if we want to have that, I mean, we could do that as a policy. And I guess you guys will come with a recommendation about how to do that.
We can certainly do that.
It will be presented in June twenty twenty three. Um, which I just want to, I think, as I was just looking at this again, I just appreciate that. Already some of the dollars are coming through in this. I think that gives us some, you know, some insights to really be able to. To support and follow up in a way that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, you know, that this work gets tied into our, to the race and equity work and also the strategic plan. Because sometimes we have this tendency to have multiple things going on at the same time and then they don't kind of, yeah, but.
We are trying to be efficient with time and resources.
Yeah, yeah.
So how much additional work will this cause administrators?
That's part of what we're going to be talking through, that because it hasn't happened at the milestone at an element. So we'll have to talk through, like, what is this name? I want to, we want to make sure we're talking to the company about kind of what the bandwidth is and requirements. So will we go into that process with them?
Because that's a potential, a good structured way of of doing what they should be doing anyway, is looking at, you know, school improvement and how they can get there, so.
Hopefully a trip that into the things that are.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Just so we have enough support for everything.
Yeah, and that was actually something that we talked just briefly about even today. Um, like what, there's a meeting that's going to happen on October twenty first, that's really kind of that first time of bringing everyone together. Um, and so, um, we'll likely get some more information on what that looks like and what supports are being requested by the administrators. So that we can ensure that. There will definitely be follow up on that piece.
Okay, um, questions, additional questions around getting advanced.
But right now, I'm at six eighteen classes. So I was wondering if there's any plan on, I mean, next year, we're going to offer more. And obviously, we'll have to do some.
Thank you for the question. Um, I know that the accreditation process is going to speak to that. And so we will be following up.
Um, and.
Yes, I guess, again, I was looking for the, you know, the kind of the how the race and equity questions are applied here, so. Um, I see the, okay, so the breakdown, um, and I see, you know, show alter. Uh, M L L students are, you know, significantly underrepresented. And I see Latinx significantly underrepresented. At Foster, the races seem to be pretty, pretty even across, which is great. Um, a little underrepresented on the M L L students, but, so the question, you know. I guess it's going to come down to, um. You know, when I look at the rubric questions, the first question is, who are the underrepresented groups? And so we can kind of see that here. Then the next question is, you know, does this policy program worsen existing disparities? And how have you intentionally involved stakeholders, blah, blah? So I mean, I think we need, um. The follow up on the rest of the questions. On this one, and actually, yeah, on on some of them, so, um, that's where. I was going back and we we discussed that early about the race and equity. We probably need a, you know, kind of a one page form. That just kind of template your other questions we have. And I guess, I don't know, when we talk about technology, I noticed that there was. A different set of questions. So my first, the first thing is, do we have the. Same, we need, we need to all be working on the same set of questions. And so, and I, you know, this is what's on the website is this rubric one, so that's what I've been working off of. But then we need to see those questions. You know, this is a place, for sure, this one needs the race and equity questions answered and addressed. So it looks like this, uh, presentation has step one, which is who are the groups? And then the next question is, okay. The analysis of the underrepresented and why and what are we going to do then?
Yeah, I think ultimately that 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 what's next, yeah.
Yeah.
We see the data, we see, uh, yeah, now, now how are we gonna? Yeah, what's the, what's the, what's the behavior, right, that we're gonna put in place?
Yeah, what are, what are the barriers to the?
Yeah.
To the, why do we not have more Latinx students in honors? Um, of course, there's a trouble, like, where are the barriers to them?
Yeah.
How do we not come down?
Yeah, and actually, that's a, one of the questions that I have. And it looks like there's a new, some new teachers hired at Foster. To support Latinx students, that you think might kind of, uh, bring in more. Um, but I think my question was originally was around show alter, like how we can potentially increase. Like, why are those not matching, right? So what is it about the AP classes and at Foster that you're attracting folks? And how can we really increase that at show alter?
I'm gonna give a. A thought. At Foster, you can self-select. And at Showalter, it is based on a recommendation. And so I'm glad that we are going to have an opportunity. For Peterson E S D to walk us through this race memory. Um, piece so that we can examine our own bias.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, see, that that would be a good, you know, step. This is the next step we're going to do. So I would say, good. Let us know what happens.
Yeah. Uh, great, any others on that one? Very, um, tech plan updates.
So this is the one where I was trying to, so you have these A through J questions. And I was, that's where I was kind of getting a little confused. Are those the questions that? We're using for the race and equity? Questions or, I mean.
These were more, I think, uh, for these, the A through J questions. I think those are the ones that were kind of from the initial board presentation protocol. That we were just discussing.
Uh, these, yes.
They don't look like it.
No.
They look like they're just kind of extended.
Okay.
I mean, I look at those six or the five that were, you know, th- these are the ones that are on the website and the race and equity team. These look like kind of a little bit enhanced versions of that. And I don't know if.
Great question.
Does the race and equity, yeah. And I, I don't know if the race and equity team is kind of working on expanding them. Or I don't know where these came from exactly, but we just all need to be on the same page.
Yeah, yeah, the one we, this guy in Peterson E S D, it has four different sets of questions.
Okay.
Um. It's the one that that I've seen most used in our schools, uh, by different departments. Um. The worksheet, the step ones, the three, the four.
Some of those are like combined, right? There's multi-questions within one, right? Okay, so these are just one of those questions separated out.
They could be.
Okay.
Yes.
Because they look kind of.
Like, for instance, the first question on here is, um. What does your department, division, school, district define as racial equitable, racially equitable outcomes related to this issue? Next one is how will leadership communicate key outcomes to stakeholders for racial equity to guide analysis?
Yeah, I just think we need to.
We had talked about this earlier today, too, just kind of a consistency of language.
Yeah.
Um, and that would come through in the questions too, so that we're, people are looking for the same questions.
Yeah, yeah, I want to make sure I'm, that the rubric is the same as as the person answering the question, so that we're on the same page.
And if I remember correctly, and the last, I think it might have been. Your superintendent report or research report last time, like that's going to be, particularly looking at the recent toolkit. How we're using it is going to be some of the work that we're doing through T S C S D.
Yes.
Okay, um, and then, you know, I know that there was different variations of, you know, kind of onboarding folks into that tool, um, that we can reinforce.
So can we get, I don't know, do you need to kind of think about? Which one we're using or?
No, I mean, the one we have is the one on the left is the one that we adopted.
Right.
That's the one on the website. It's the one.
Right.
So.
Right.
Again, I'd have to take a look at each of those questions to see if they're just embedded within those five. I have a kind of cross reference them.
Yeah, I think, I don't know, I haven't done that complete analysis, but they're kind of, kind of there. Um. Okay, um. The, I guess, the other is probably more. Well, the other question I have on this is, when I was looking through this analysis, I don't, I see, I mean. The race and equity is is looking for, you know, it starts with the underrepresented and the special subgroups. And I see references to E L L or M L L students. I see references to special education students. And she references to low income. So I don't see any, any analysis related to race. So black, white, Latinx, and, um, so that seems to be missing from this analysis. missing from this analysis. And just to give you a, for example, if I did that, for example, and I'll talk about this a little bit more about science. If you look at, for example, Thorndike, which has twice, about twice as many, twice the percentage of black students as at Cascade View and Tico Elementary. And you look at their science scores, they're significantly lower. And I've gone through this analysis more, but Thorndike is the one school that has not had both a robust creative learning labs and robotics program. And I know there's, you know, in the process of dealing with that, but
Yeah.
that's the kind of, kind of racial analysis that I would look for to say, you know, we have, and their, and their science scores, the black science, election science scores at Thorndike are, are really well. They're less than 10%. And so then I would tie that to, well, are we delivering, you know, the, the same opportunities to them? And it looks to me like we are not. And therefore, I know we're already kind of in the process of of remedy that, but that's the kind of analysis that, you know, I would expect to see on this. Which, yeah, I don't, you know, I mean, I, it's fine for those other groups. That's good. But, you know, I think we still, we need to get down into the, the racial analysis as well.
So focusing on categoricals such as special education and English language learners.
That's fine.
Basically what the report that I submitted.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I pointed out in it.
Right, right. Yeah, that's what I said. And I see a reference to low income.
Yeah, yeah.
But I don't see any reference to any of the racial groups.
Um, my understanding is they're part of these groups.
They are, but they are separate.
Yeah, they make up the categorical programming like everyone else, you know? That was my thinking.
Well, but if you disaggregate, you know, there's white, black, Latinx, Asian, and there, you know, I will show in our district, we have the same gaps that, that just, that everybody has. White, Asian students and black Latinx Pacific Islanders. And so, I mean, I think we need to, you know, identify in our system where those, those gaps are. And then what are we gonna do about it? And so, like I said, the example was, you know, I didn't go, have to go too far to see the, the, you know, I mean, how we implemented creative learning labs was problematic. You know, I mean, we dealt with the equity issue and, and particularly Thorndike, you know, got the short end and some of that deal. So and we just need to, you know, kind of recognize those and then move forward with the, with the solutions to pixel. To me, that's what the race and equity is about.
What you're doing.
Yeah. But I think, I think just to see that, you know, documented in the analysis is, because I don't, I've not seen yet, like I say, the full, you know, Dr. Worce's, you know, I'm the gifted, I have a capable program. We see the start of it. It's broken, broken out by race and what all the results are. And then the next step is, okay, here's what we do. But I don't see, I don't see that break out in this analysis.
So we have the equity, but just not the race side of that.
Yeah, yeah. And that's the difference between, I mean, that's one of the things I always say we got from our students when we were talking about an equity policy and fed it to the students. They said, no, you really need to put race in there as the, as the number one thing, which is not what every, you know, most districts don't do that. They just have an equity policy.
So Jeff, is that something that could be easily created with this information you have?
Well, you know, what we, what we've discussed here are the strategies that we're doing, that we need to do to equal the playing field. Those strategies are contained in the report and on the creative learning lab section of it. You know, we, uh, we pay teacher salaries, supplies, we're buying curriculum, upgrading the new curriculum, the transition to that new curriculum. And so that's across all four labs in the district. And it's, you know, included in that is the robotics program and those additional things that those teachers are doing.
So are all the robotics programs up in each school?
We're getting.
Getting.
So that's one.
Laid the ground.
Yeah. I mean, it was, it was up, and I'll show some data later, but it was up at Cascade View and Tico Elementary, but it was not up at Thorndike.
And I think too, like, you know, the, the strategies, you know, these may be the right strategies and the effective strategies that are gonna help us, right? Really eliminate some of those gaps. And um, how are we gonna know that if we don't know really where those gaps are, right? So I think that's definitely the point, um, is we need to make sure that we're looking at all of the potential indicators and data points that we can to make sure that we are, did these strategies are actually raising, right? The, the access to our Latinx and our black students if they're, if they're further from those access points. So we need to have the starting point. And then the, the finish point, we can actually see the data that says, yeah, these strategies worked for everyone, right? But it's like with anything, when we're thinking about equity, you know, so much of the time we think about we kind of have this backwards approach, right? Whereas we should, nothing about what's gonna work the best for everyone. Um, and then we implement that thing. Yeah, that works for most folks. But who it doesn't help is the folks that are farthest away from those access points already, right? So when we think about who is furthest away, right? And then what is the strategy that will support them? We're gonna intern support everyone. Right? So really thinking at that lowest level versus that, the, the highest level.
It's just hard to write outcomes when we haven't done this yet. We know our baseline for our, where we are with the weight cast at, at Thorndike Elementary School. We have a set of strategies here that we're going to try that have been successful at other buildings. It's hard to project, um, what the outcomes are going to be. I feel like we're taking the right approach, like we've done in other buildings. And you're gonna demonstrate and show some success with those strategies. And so, again, it's hard to write about something that we haven't tried yet. I mean, so.
I think, I think all we're looking for is, this is the only word to say, okay, here we have this issue. We have this gap. Here's what we're doing.
Right.
And we expect, you know, based on other evidence, that this will, that this will improve. And then next year, we'll check. Did it improve?
Right.
Yeah, it went up. And, you know, are you gonna be able to turn around Thorndike, you know, in a second? Maybe not. It may take a couple of years. But, you know, I mean, as for me, I just want to see, is it going up? Is it going up? Is it going up?
And we, again, we have the demographic data available because we have the demographic broken out by equity pieces. So we just need to add that information in on the race, race demographic.
Yeah, I just noticed, you know, that, that when you do the analysis, the evidence that you're, you thought through the race issues. And then, you know, like, you know, you have the strategies, I think, in place. It just, I think it needs to be explicit. That you just, just document what you're doing. And I think because, you know, as I say, we don't, I mean, this is hard getting, getting to, um, you know, race issues can be hard to deal with, but we need to put it out on the table and then deal with it.
Yeah, I have, I have no problem.
Yeah. Okay.
Thanks, Jim. No, I said, thanks, Jim. Any questions? Already, very students.
Uh, I just wanted to be confident about, like, and, you know, there was actually someone that was there, like, like I, I remember it was somewhere that I was gonna have to, like, take the I R A lesson at home and have it come work every day or something. That's not.
So what was mentioned was that after students do the initial I R A assessment, then they will create pathways for them to the end goal for them.
So is the path of earth I R A lesson session? I'm sorry, I know.
Good question. You haven't taken your I R A assessment.
I don't think that's the season and you like.
The window closes on Friday, September thirty. Yeah. Okay. One of those on Friday.
So do you know if the, the elementaries have all done their I R A's?
The elementary, uh, the middle school and, and looking and overview of foster, foster, there are some students that are taking it as well.
And what class do they take that in?
They would take it in their math or their, um, English class. That would be ideal. Yeah, so I'm speaking with that tomorrow to just follow. They need.
And, and then that information will go to the parents?
Yes. Once is all.
What's it all done? And do you know when that might be?
Well, since they've done on September thirty, one of the things that we want to do is share out with the parents, how to understand the, how to describe those students and see. I mean, that's going to take some time, because we run like the, that information is also translated. As well.
Interested, interested in the, uh, the reports that the parents and the students actually get relative to, you know, how well they've done. I mean, does it provide them any information that's useful to that they can take action on? And so you sent me some of these, reference to some of the, uh, reports and, you know, these domains seem really high level to me. So, you know, domain number, numbers and operations, okay. They're agreeable. I mean, what does that really tell a parent or a student about? You know, are they having trouble with division? Or they have, you know, I mean, I'm just wondering if there's, and, you know, provides enough information back to the students and parents that they can actually take action on? Or is this just kind of a, you know, status? There you are.
Good question. So when you talk about the domains.
Yeah.
Top of numbers and operation.
Yeah.
Essentially, the numbers sense.
Yeah.
So the work that students will be doing in the classroom will be subject to one number sense. So the parent may not understand numbers and operation.
Yeah.
But numbers sense meaning one-to-one corresponders will be able to count from one until being able to use numbers. Uh, and so, again, as the students are doing work in their classrooms, then that communication from the classroom home would be not numbers and operation.
Right.
But it would be the thing that you're working on that speaks to that standard.
Right.
So that is the information that we want to make sure that our parents understand via the teachers as you're speaking down the line. But the information that we're going to send home is just telling parents what these numbers mean and the rest of where your student is in their grade. And so then with that information, here is the work that we're doing at the schools to help your students grow. And as students continue to grow, we'll get to bridge.
Okay, so there's a, so they're getting some kind of connection there between what the I R A report says and what the teachers, what the, what's going on in the classroom.
Yes.
Yeah. Because, you know, it seems like a lot of this, when you're trying to provide, you know, meaningful feedback to students, you know, it needs to be timely and actionable. And I'm not sure, so from the time the students take the test and the time they get this I R A report back is probably what, a few weeks?
Well.
Or?
So it's, it shouldn't be.
Okay.
It could be.
Okay.
So here's, here's the plan that we were talking about on Monday again. So we had a call saying on September sixth with principals and staff. And they're working on student achievement goals.
Right.
And so even in speaking with the students, they said that just taking the I R A test is not enough for me.
Right.
But when someone sits down and gives me a meaningful connection to what I've done.
Right.
And then I could sit down and write a goal
Right.
from kindergarten all the way up into twelfth grade, it means more.
Right.
So that is the action that students will be working on after they take the I R A. So the window closes on September thirty. And then all of the goals will be written after that. So the window is open ten days after that. Every student will have an I, a goal for reading in math or math and language arts.
And so that goal that they would come up with would be pulled from information, the teacher would help them set that goal based on what they see in the test and what they've seen in the classroom work and stuff. Okay. Yeah, cause that's, I was going back and looking through some of, um, John Heady's research about, you know, what's the most effect size? And, and that idea of, of student, you know, goals is one of the highest. It's interesting, the, the highest is actually teachers' collaborative working together, which is one of my things that.
Which I know Dr. Worce is working very hard to get those staff members working together.
Yeah, which is why I'd like to see, you know, recognition for teams more often than for individuals because of that effect. Anyway. Okay, yeah, as long as we have a good, you know, cause that, I think that's absolutely key to get that information back to students quickly. And, and to the degree that you can connect it to I R A, because I think a lot of students are disconnected from I R A because they don't, they don't understand it. They don't see how it's helping them. But if you can somehow, and I'm not sure, you know, maybe we need to go to I R A and get some better feedback. I mean, you know, one of the things we talked about, and we probably don't allow this, but, you know, if students, or particularly for, you know, we find one of those students that just did this, you know, went through it really fast. And so hopefully somebody goes and asks them, okay, what happened? You know, so they had a bad day, you know, something was going on at home, whatever. And would we allow them to take another, to take the test again? Okay, that's good. Yeah. I think a lot of, you know, and the students get to the point where they're motivated and say, you know, I just, I messed up for some reason on that day. Can I do it again?
Well, I didn't understand why.
Yeah, or I didn't, you know, whatever. And then allow them to, you know, get back into it, engage in it. Yeah. So that was the other, if we have that aspect of it, that's, I think, really important to, so that's great.
And that was why I asked about the timeline, because I've had some parents ask me, when will we find out about I R A schools? Yeah, it is, but that they're interested in knowing. But I, I didn't have an answer.
Yeah, I really commend you on this, this plan here, because I think that's really gonna be key that we're missing that and getting students to understand it and parents to understand it. And, you know, that'll improve a lot, I think.
And I also want to just say in appreciation of that, that it's from kindergarten through twelfth grade. I think that's so important to just, you know, resisting the urge to have male adultism into our world, right? Kindergartners are so capable of making goals, um, and, and thinking about the new career about that. So thank you for, for really helping to get that at the elementary level. Kindergartners set very high expectations for themselves.
You know, like right now, I'm just doing half the, half the entire mess up often.
I can email that information to you.
Yeah, thank you. Cause I'm afraid that some of the students are getting kind of like notifications. I, like, I'm talking to a lot of kindergartners and like, you know, that are, that I R A is supposed to be happening, but we don't know what's going to be in them. And like in my advice, I'm very advicey forward. We haven't received any, like, notification about it.
Is that a situation where like the window closes and closes?
The window closes, but we can pass within, we can open in depth with students. Yes.
I certainly, we want to make sure that we're not in a, the yeah. Students are negatively impacted, right? With the ability that have taken. Um, okay, moving on to the sexual harassment, harassment prohibited annual report. Any additional questions on this one?
Yeah. Dennis, can you just speak up a little bit?
Yes, sorry. I was wondering, living at the, is that a self-identified type of defense? Like what were your criteria for collecting?
So I, I would like to front load this by saying that it's, what, what we set out to accomplish, uh, in our field, but in terms of, in talking and having conversations with people, I thought it was just easy to jump in and just start asking these questions. And what I learned was that it, that people were, it was a very sensitive topic to have conversations about. So after my first two conversations, I saw, and I thought that maybe having one-on-one conversations with people that are from across the state ball, uh, continually. So I looked, um, first out, I was looking for elementary, middle school, high school. And then I was also looking at race, gender, identity, and, um, race and ethnicity, and then along with, and then the same for the students.
And like some of the trends, so we talked about like what, what did we, what's on the question there, what did they learn? There was, there was a trend saying that, you know, just the women talk about a lot at school. And my question is, is there like a plan to increase the conversations about it? And how frequently it happens? Because someone always said that it only happens like twice a year.
Excellent. So it would be very clear that this isn't something that is discussed among students with their, their conference. Uh, I did learn through the conversation that there are specific teachers that'll have conversations about this. But it isn't something that people are inviting conversations about. Uh, the one referred to, there was one official, uh, report registered for the sexual harassment from in the 2122 school. But I, what I gather is that based on what people have, are conveying is that there are things that are happening and things that are being said that are not reported to anybody.
Yeah, that was kind of my concern when I see one. And, you know, a couple of meetings ago, we had three students in here talking about this issue. And, you know, I, I find it really hard to believe. I mean, I know it's more than one. And so, um, in other districts, and you do talk about the anonymous reporting. I mean, other districts have that pretty widely, I think. So getting, getting that kind of, they'll at least start to get a little more realistic. I know, I understand it's, it's harder to investigate when it's anonymous. But you start to get, you can tell a little more realistic sense of actually how wide spread it is probably, which I think is, is helpful something.
Do we know when the reported system is going to be coming out, like the timeline for that?
Yes, according to the timeline, you have it certainly come out for five seconds and that's good. Genuinely.
Dennis, do you have some thoughts on this that you'd like to share with Aaron sometime?
I think, you know, but it would mostly be about like increasing the conversation in that school, the educational one. Because I know that there is a plan to have to like talk to the technology to the secondary school about, about control itself. But I want to make sure that it's more intense and, you know, off course, age group, but more condensed and happens more frequently, just once a year. But it's imperative, like happening, conversations will happen. And as we know from last year, I think you're on board, you said that, you know, it, what happened to them too, when something, you know, small free plant. So it would increase in awareness and education about it when you put it on.
Is there a reason it's taking till January to do this? If it's happening now, would?
For the reported system? Yeah, we wanted to make sure that it was done thoroughly. We have like several steps phases that we're looking through, not just launching it and make sure that we need to make sure that there's somebody on the receiving.
Yeah, right.
That knows how we did it and ensure and, and access the reports that we're giving.
Could student voice be included in this? Policy make you?
Yes. Yeah. And actually, there's, there was input from students in part, um, you know, what do we know? Uh, what have we learned? We learned, one of the things that we learned was that students are looking at, uh, the policy that's written in the planners and are having, like the conversations that are taking place, at least they should walk or attend around what's in the plan, if it's written in the plan. That would be something that we want to continue to. If that makes sense.
I'm just wondering if Dennis. Dennis is interested. It sounds like he's interested in that conversation with you about it, maybe?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
And students that have foster awareness club, and they might be interested in talking a little bit on this.
You have a club about that? Oh, wow.
Yeah, not to kind of reiterate what things are running inside, but I think, you know, just looking at this report, the first thing that came to mind is this seems like such a, uh, different picture from what we heard, right? And what I think we know is happening, um, in school districts, so, um, or in our, in our district. And I think just to, to Dennis's point about running more opportunities to talk about it, the more that we normalize conversations, the more we destigmatize of talking about things, right? And we create more and more safe opportunities for folks to, to just bring, bring these things up. So, um, yeah, you know, again, I, um, have, you know, these are some of the specific things that are really, you know, the task force is going to be really looking at and examining and then hopefully working, you know, with Aaron around some of those recommendations. I mean, I know Dennis is going to help us in that, um, that task force.
The other thing that I was going to bring up too, and I was looking back at the task force, I mean, it focuses around these policies 3205 and 511. But there's also this policy 3207, which is prohibition of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. So I would suggest you probably, the task force should look at that one as well. It broadens it out a little bit.
You said 32.
3207. Prohibits, prohibition of harassment, intimidation, bullying. Because it, I mean, this one tends 3205 focus on sexual harassment, but there's also other kinds of intimidation, bullying that's going on, that students talk about. And so, um, but they're all kind of tied together, I think, in terms of how we should deal with it. And so, yeah.
Definitely can hold that too.
Yeah, would be great.
Thank you. Any other questions? Increasing mental health supports. Um, so there are people, two, two big things that came up for me around, um, performance. Thank you. This is definitely a move in the right direction. And I think I, you know, particularly after our conversation the other day, I'm, I had to kind of re-center and say, okay, we're not as far along as I would have liked to be, but here we are. Um, and now we're, you know, we're, we're, we're going to get there. I have no doubt. So, um, so thank you. Um, so if you can just follow up questions that came, came out of like, um, around kind of some of the external providers that we partner with and not really show like what the, really the connection is there, what that partnership looks like, but are full, right? And I understand like that is a, that is a much larger scale problem than these few providers here in Tuckwell. Like just mental health providers are just tapped out. Um, and I'm just curious if, if there has been any, um, um, opportunity or any work that's been done to potentially look into other providers in our area that may have some open space or even could dedicate, you know, a certain amount of slots to our district. Um, just kind of what I guess creative work has been or discussions have been taking place, knowing that these outside agencies, um, sound, uh, can say no, and tell them are not really feasible options for us right now.
So we will, I know that our council of social workers are working on that. And we will have a need of, um, total service. So they will be able to share, um, all of the interactions that they've had with those outside providers. Outside of the waiting list, what other, um, providers are available to us.
Okay. Okay. Um, it's something that I was thinking about and I have no idea like how this would work with, you know, school district. But I know that we, you know, there are ways in which we, we work with the local, um, community television in the area. Um, and in one of the, um, I know big youth serving organizations in the county has partnered with, um, a college to actually provide some mental health support within their programs. And so I'm wondering if, if that might be an, an option to potentially pursue. Maybe that's, you know, a way to support folks that are in counseling programs to come in and do, you know, get some of their hours and also support our young people. Um, so that just might be a creative way to potentially get extra resources that are during this work. Um, you know. Yeah, it's without recommendation. Um, I noticed earlier that, um, I think Jennifer Jones had her hand raised. I wasn't sure if, you still had something you wanted to, um, to, to share?
Um, Dr. Borchet answered it.
Okay.
The question I had was, um, so the, the state is going to be adding, added up essentially one, uh, one O FTE of, in this general area of council of social workers, you know, that whole area, uh, per, um, elementary school over the next three years. And they're doing it incrementally, but, you know, fortunately we have ESSR dollars that can kind of cover the shortfall for the first two years and then fill in. So it looks like each elementary school has chosen to get one, what they're calling SEL interventionist. Which, when I look at the, so it sounds like Tech, Techill Elementary has hired there already. There's already Cascade View and Thorndike are still, um, out waiting for somebody. And I was kind of curious, it looked, so it looked like Thorndike was going for a, um, uh, certified, uh, staff person and Techill, or, um, Cascade View is going for a classified. What's the logic there? It looks, when I look at the job description of these, it looks like they're kind of like utility players. I mean, they're doing a little bit of everything, which, um, I guess is okay. But I'm curious about why, because we're getting allocated a full, you know, um, certified staff, which is more money than a classified staff would be. So what's the logic for doing? And I, I don't know, Staggle Elementary got a certified or a classified?
Certified.
Certified. So why is Cascade View going?
Just at high level, other than them collaborating with staff.
Yeah.
This is the direction that Cascade wants to move in.
So are they taking, are they then going to use the extra money that they are saving by not getting instructional for something else?
Uh, it's a good question.
Okay.
I can find out.
It's just curious to me that, yeah, one would be, two would be doing instructional or certified and others would be. The other question I kind of had when I was looking at the, uh, job visits or the job postings, they're allocated or they're indicated this is an ESSR funded position for 2223. And I guess the question, that seems to be sending out the signal that to people that this is, this position is really only funded for, for one year, maybe two, which, um, I'm not sure why you want to send out that signal because it is going to be fully funded after the third year by, you know, the allocation of the state. And so if I'm a person looking at this, you know, I mean, and particularly for the social, um, social, well, social worker kind of positions. You know, we, most of the positions, I mean, it takes a year for, for somebody like that to know our students, know our community. And so we want them here for the long term. So it seems like if somebody's looking at that, oh, this is just a one-year position. Do I want to go there? I don't, I don't know. Is that the message that's coming out? It's maybe a more question for Aaron. I'm not sure.
So would, so instead of us, us sharing and trying to be transparent that
Yeah.
one year, we should share, there should be a two-year or three-year position?
Well, I mean, what is our, I mean, is our intention that, that at the end of, um, you know, when ESSR funds run out, it's going to be gone? Because, see, I think we are actually getting funded for that. I mean, particularly because the legislature is phasing that in at the end of three years or two years. It is going to be fully funded by the state. So why would we?
It will be fully funded.
Yeah.
One in each school?
Yeah.
Or just one?
Not entirely fully funded. So it's very, it's been tracking that as well.
I'm, when I was looking at the numbers, it's 1.0, pretty close.
Yes, but it's also, um, contingent on the person in the position.
Contingent on?
The person in the position and where they follow the salary spend.
Oh, that's, that's correct. Yeah, yeah, you're right. You're right. It's, it's funded, but, but it may not, yeah, I can't guarantee that it's going to
Right.
be there. That's true.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it is funded. So, uh, but, yeah, I don't know. I, I'm not sure what messages people are getting when they see, oh, this is an ESSR funded. Is that singing out to everybody, oh, this is just a one-year and they're, and they, and I'm out? And is that the kind of person that we want?
Well, I guess the messages, it is contingent of platforms. So
Yeah.
if this is something that you want to do until funds run out. Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I, as I noticed, obviously, I don't know, we haven't filled these two positions. So.
This is like having a grant position. You want to let them know that this is a grant funded position.
Well, branch is, is, it, it really does run out. This one, the money is not running out, but the position may go away because of
Yes.
CBA agreements, but.
And I think the conversations around these, both with kind of the front lobby and of ESSR. And knowing that some of the positions might not receive the full recuperation from the state depending on the person is that through the budgeting process, there's all sorts of things that we'll have discussions about prioritizing too. So I think the idea is to make sure that we've got the positions to see what the impact is. Figure out where that fits into prioritization when we're talking about budgeting. All of that juxtaposed with enrollment and other aspects that in the classroom. So we've got a lot of, you know, difficult prioritizations in dealing and a lot of needs and supports that we're trying to get to our students' families for sure. So, um, I think it's, you know, we do want to be upfront with people so that they at least have some idea. I understand that kind of, what, what kind of draw are we going to get if someone's going to use that particular piece? But on the other hand, if I were applying, I'd rather know that upfront than just to get in and then figure out, oh, after a year, let this position might be going away. They might feel like, you know, they've been. Yeah.
Yeah, it's a tricky balancing, but clearly these positions, you know, we want somebody who's going to invest in our community and stick around. So, okay.
I think one of the things that stuck out to me, which I think I knew already before I got this information, um, you know, is just things look so different. I'm at every school and I know that, you know, there's, there needs of course to be space for that as every school community is different. And, you know, I, I, I'm not sure if I'm going to hear about this or, or not, but it's a good like, how can you create a environment where a family's experience is consistent, right? Um, regardless of the elementary or the school they go to, all the way elementary, middle, and high school. And so I, you know, I, and then also thinking about like early interventions, the elementary is the time to really do that. And so I, you know, I wonder if there's ways that we can unify to some degree and strengthen what's happening at each elementary school and almost like creating a team across elementary schools that helps support these plans at all of them. Um, uh, you know, I don't know what that would look like, but just some, some way of really kind of creating a, like this is, this is how we, we navigate social, like the learning, mental health supports in all of our elementary schools. It might look a little different, but this is kind of our, our, our process and how we as a whole district team are supporting them. Like the, just the last thing, and I spoke to Dr. Henry about this morning, and you kind of alluded to it earlier, is, you know, if you know, I think, um, and this actually came up at the parent advisory committee, um, the other day of like, what do we mean when we say certain words? Um, and I think even, you know, I, I think I probably contribute in a way like really muddying S E L and medical help, right? They're very connected, but they're also separate things. Um, and, um, you know, so I, I think we're going to add to a, an agenda item soon, just some, kind of some dialogue amongst the, 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 all, all of us, like collectively to really say, what do we as a couple of us mean when we say community? What do we mean when we say social model learning? What do we mean when we say, I don't know, like so, so that there's really more just intentionality? Um, because again, even a little bit, it's like they're, they're muddied, they're muddied a little bit and, um, I want to get some real clarity around that so that we can actually be intentional about the supports that we're more just observation. Additional questions?
Thank you. I did send you the information about the. Since she said she sent you information about Ireland. In your inbox. Okay. Um. That moves us to, oh, there's more, twenty-two and three. Yeah, okay. Okay. Okay, the Tarrulla School District and State S B A data. Sorry about rushes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, um, the smarter balance assessment scores came out a few weeks ago and as I'm prone to do, I try to do a little analysis on, on what's going on and I'm not going to talk in depth about all these graphs, but, uh, a few of them. This first one is always interesting to me because it's, it's the King County School Districts. This is district level data. It's the reading test and it's proficiency raised versus, um, free and reduced lunch rate, which is low income percentage. And, you know, we always say that, um, test scores are highly correlated to income. Turns out they're almost completely correlated to income. This, this R squared of, of point nine seven R squared is a, is a statistical measure of the fit. A perfect fit is one point oh. I mean, you can't get much of a better fit than, uh, this. And so, you know, when you from a state level, if you look at this and you say if money makes this much difference, then we should be putting a lot more dollars in all those districts on the right-hand side of this, which is exactly not what the state does. The state actually, according to the, um, Education Law Center back in Rutgers University that looks at states across the country. We have actually a regressive funding system that actually puts more money, not a whole lot, but more money in the, in the higher, uh, income schools. So, you know, when, when we're looking at school, when, when we're looking at these scores, we need to keep in mind that the context we're in, and that is we're in a state that, you know, funds it completely backwards. And so therefore you get these results, you know, the same results year after year after year after year. And so, um, it's important to understand that when we, you know, look at kind of where we are in that, in that position. The, the second.
Uh, look, if I could just tell you. So the only thing that I, I can definitely understand where that's, that's coming from, the, the concern that we have is we also don't want to project that because
Correct.
you're a low-income school or a district, your outcome is predetermined.
Correct. Yeah. Let's say.
We just want to make sure we're not sending that message.
Yeah, two things about this. Um, one is, you know, first of all, when I look at this, you know, at the district level, you don't even need to take the test. I can just, just tell me your free and reduced lunch. I'll tell you what test it is. That's at the district level. Second, this is not about, um, deficiency in students. A lot of times these gaps, you know, people say, well, I shouldn't talk about that because it's not about a deficiency in students. It's about deficiencies in the system that we have. And that's why we absolutely need to be talking about these things. And second, and the, the other thing is, you know, well, a couple of other things. One is the, I think one of the best education data analysts in the state, Pete Bowles, when he retired a few years ago, he was constantly on the state to present this data in terms of how are you doing relative to other districts that are similar to you? Uh, he called them peer districts. And, um, and, you know, when that happens, it rarely happens in the state. The state rarely does that. But for example, it happened recently when the Center for Educational Effectiveness, the group that does our surveys and we're working on strategic plan, did, um, a study of what they call positive outlier schools. And so what they were looking at is, okay, given, given your income, you know, we wanted, in this case, it would be like districts that are above the line, positive outlier above the line. So you're performing much better than you would be expected given the income level. And when you do that, you know, one of the, I think, seven high schools in the state was Foster High School. And they looked, I mean, they looked at more than just test scores, but they looked at other things. And so, you know, it's, it's, um, anytime, and I'm going to show another example of some data that came this year where we scored, you know, significantly above the line. So, you know, we, those are celebrations we had, um, understanding that we're operating within the context of the system that severely, uh, underfunds us. Um, but, you know, this is, this is the S L A, if you go to the next slide, it's, it's the same story in math. So there's no big, um, uh, mystery there. That's also district wide. Now, this next one is an interesting one because this is some data that, you know, shows, you know, significantly above the line. So these are all the, the King County grade five schools and there's obviously a lot more. The spread, the, the scatter plot gets a little more scattered, but it's still super highly correlated to, uh, income and and this is fifth grade science. And, you know, you notice Cascade View there is way above the line, which is, that's outstanding work. Techful Elementary is above the line and Thorndex below the line. So then we kind of say, well, what's going on with that? So go to the next slide. Um, so this is where it gets interesting. Um, if we go back and think about, uh, the Creative Learning Labs, which, you know, we made a significant investment in those a number of years ago. And, you know, that's highly related to science thinking because it's, it's hands-on, it's experimentation. That's what all that stuff is about. And when we look at, you know, when we started doing that and I have here, you know, the different schools, um, Tuckal Elementary, Thorndike, Cascade View, this fifth grade science scores and then the state above it. So Cascade View or Tuckal Elementary has been pretty consistent all the way through. And the reason is they, from the beginning, they had a full, robust computer, um, Creative Learning Lab plus a full, robust robotics program going. And you can see, and so even today, you know, they're now above the state average, which anytime our just, we have a just, it happens occasionally. And it's above the state average. That's super outstanding work, uh, given, given, again, given the funding system that we have in the state. And so then we see, uh, Thorndike and Cascade View were not implemented with full, uh, implementation. You know, I think Cascade View, it was the first year was like the third grade did it or something and Thorndike, it was the first grade. And then I know at Thorndike, there was, there's a, obviously a period in there between eighteen, nineteen and twenty twenty-two where COVID was happening and we didn't have scores, but, um, Thorndike actually lost their, uh, Creative Learning Labs teacher retired. And they have a new one and then the robotics program kind of got discontinued. Uh, and so, but you'll notice at Cascade View between eighteen, nineteen and twenty-one, twenty-two, it's, it's skyrocketed. And, you know, I know, um, having worked with, um, the robotics teacher up there, who's also the Creative Learning Labs teacher. She's outstanding and you can see the difference that that makes in science schools. I mean, all of a sudden now Cascade View, which is at like eighty percent, uh, free and reduced lunch is now above the state average in science. I mean, that's, that's outstanding, uh, work. And, and then Thorndike, you know, you say, well, what's going on? Well, you know, they, we lost kind of the Creative Learning Labs. Creative Learning Labs is there, but we don't have the robotics program, but we're getting it back. So, uh, you know, hopefully next year we'll be able to see that kind of, uh, bump up in, in, in that. So, and the other, uh, story about this, and, you know, obviously I don't know everything that was going on in this thing, but I can definitely relate to Creative Learning Labs. The interesting thing, uh, also at Cascade View that I want to point out in terms of, of strategies is that, um, I've been working with the robotics teacher up there for, for many years and she's decided that she wants to, you know, um, move on to something else. And so what happened was last year she recruited the Creative Learning Labs teacher. And she and I, all, we all three of us stopped the robotics. So there's a smooth transition over to the, so now all of a sudden, you know, I mean, I anticipate, you know, we'll have that same outstanding, um, performance going forward. And, you know, unfortunately, like at Thorndike, the, the teacher retired and was doing robotics. And there wasn't that smooth transition. And so anyway, it's just a, um, this is a pitch for a couple of things. One is thinking about smooth transitions wherever possible. And also let's make sure that we continue to fund this Creative Learning Labs program. And it's technology, it's heavily technology based and so we need to be upgrading it, but it produces these kind of results. And so, uh, it was a great investment that we did and, and now we just need to make sure that all our students are getting, getting access to that. The next one I just, so I was looking at the, all the, um, the S B A results and there's like thirty-one when you, when you count different building, combinations of building subject and grade level. You know, so, you know, that was fifth grade science, third grade math, so forth. And if you look at them all, and if you put in, you know, a little adjustment for, um, for, uh, low income or poverty and bump it up a little bit based on the poverty. You know, these are like our top, out of the thirty-one, these are our top eight performing groups. And so, um, you see Cascade View, uh, third, fifth grade, uh, reading, Tuckal Elementary, fifth grade reading. So the fifth grades did, did outstanding. They almost hit the state average. And if you kind of adjust for the income levels, they actually beat the state averages. But so outstanding work there. We talked about the science at Cascade View and Tuckal Elementary. The other one I want to point out was the, uh, because it's really important is, uh, reading or English language at Foster in tenth grade. And the reading, that, the reason that one's so important is although, you know, these days you don't have to pass the S P A C reading to graduate. It's one of the options that in order to graduate, you have to get, you know, some option of reading. It could be passing the S C T test or there's different options, but this is one of the main options. And so, you know, to have that one way up on the list is really, really good. So congratulations to the folks at Foster for that one. The three other ones below, I didn't quite get to the point of, of beating the state average, but they're still good. The, um, reading at Cho Walter eighth grade and Cascade View, third grade reading and, um, uh, math at, um, Tuckal Elementary. So these are kind of the, so I just want to celebrate the top, um, performance in that group. Um, the next one, I, I'm just going to go through these really quick, but when you look at the state, this is the state, the level back to the state level, all grades. And this is the E L A test. And this is illustrating the, the racial gaps. So which are consistent year after year after year, Asian, white, two of our races, and then, you know, the next black, um, South American and Native American. And you notice of course during the, the most recent, um, the COVID, every, everybody went down, you know, across the board. Um, the racial gaps didn't increase much, but everybody went down. That's reading. If you go to the next one, it's the same, kind of the same story with math. And if you go to the next one, the next one is the income. And that's the more relevant. The income gap in reading actually, uh, increased, uh, which is consistent across the nation. So, you know, uh, again, money matters. Um, and then you go to the next slide, it's the math, same thing. Uh, everybody went down and the gap increased. And so in science is the next one, again, at the state level, again, went down, gap increased. So, you know, this, this story about, um, income matters. So the last kind of said, and I won't talk about all these, but this is one, I always like to go back and do a little history. So this is going back to the district, Tuckal School District. And it's third grade reading. And, um, oh, sorry, you lay us back. Um. Oh, okay. Oh, that, okay. Yeah, this is, no, sorry. This is, um, this is the racial gap. So as, um, in the state, we also have the same race gaps. And that's illustrated here in reading. And then the next one is the same one is the gaps, racial gaps in math for the Tuckal School District. And, um, our gaps aren't quite as big. That's only because the top group doesn't, is not as high. But we still have the same, same racial gaps going on here. The next one is the science. Yes. Again, same gap, same races. And go to the next one. Um, this is oh, the income. Yeah. And we also have the same income gaps in our district. Reading, math, same income gaps. Okay. So this is the last one. I'm just going to go with time on. And that is, this is third grade reading um, in the Tuckal School District over the last, um, since fourteen fifteen is going back to there. And I think it's, it's, it's always instructive to, to, to go back and say, you know, what was going on during these different times, you know? And if you go back to like, uh, two thousand thirteen, you see, so the, the Tuckal School District scores are the blue ones and the state are the, uh, the red ones. You know, we go back to two thirty, we as a, as a district almost hit the state average in third grade reading again, which is given the, again, given the income distribution in the, in the state, this is, this is outstanding. I mean, this, when you get that high now, since then, you know, everything has kind of gone down. You know, the state has gone down significantly in fourteen fifteen and that's when S P A C hit. So we know S P A C's a much harder test and everybody went down. But, you know, we, we, we were within five points, five and a half points of the state back in thirteen and now we're, you know, at twenty-five gap with the state. So, you know, what's been going on? And this was brought up, you know, there's a lot of questions been raised up in the, in the parents group brought this up, you know, is our, is our third grade reading leaders, uh, you know, curriculum the best? You know, during that period, we also shifted from coaches to interventionists. Is that a good thing and not a good thing? You know? I think this brings up a lot of questions for, you know, examining the third grade reading. And, you know, you can say, well, I mean, third grade reading is considered one of the key benchmarks. And there's this concept in education called the leaky pipeline, which, um, basically says, you know, if you have these various benchmarks along the way, maybe reading for K, third grade reading, fifth grade math, you know, these things. And the output at the end is going to college and being, getting a successful job. If you miss these benchmarks along the way, so you know, if you aren't at, uh, grade level or proficient third grade reading, your chances of, you know, going to college and getting a great job go down significantly. So, you know, the, and, and it just, you know, I can show you some, uh, I didn't bring them, but they're done at several different levels. And so it's really important that we kind of pay attention to these, um, particularly these, some of these elementary benchmark things because they set students up for, you know, what's going to happen, uh, in their future. So, um, and I think we really need to examine it. And I'll go to the next one. The next one is math, third grade math. And you'll see back in thirteen year, we actually beat the state average. That was a phenomenal year. Uh, where, you know, Tuckal despite the income beat the state average, we've been going down since then. The one thing I will comment also, um, if you go back to like two thousand nine, is that was, or ten was the first year of our new, uh, math expressions. Uh, so the new curriculum fit there. And if you look, and this is what, you know, in my opinion, a great, uh, implementation of a curriculum looks like. The next three years, boom, boom, boom. And we actually achieved, you know, beat the state average over three years. I mean, that was, that was outstanding implementation and a great lineup. The, you know, at the time, I remember I was working with, uh, elementary math at that time and I could see, you know, we had before the math expressions, we had a curriculum that wasn't lined up with the standards. And I knew that was a team, we're going to fifth grade, for example, fifth grade fractions is a big one. I mean, we didn't even teach in our scope and sequence, just grade until after the test. And so we were totally off and by getting And by getting this new, uh, you know, uh, curriculum. And it was lined up and we taught it and and it was well trained. And you can see the results that we can get from that. Now, since then. Of course, the FBA has come in and of course, you know, again, the state has gone down, everybody's gone down. But we've gone down even more. Um, and, you know, switching from coaches to intervention is, um. So, you know, again, we need to kind of ex- examine, I think, you know, what we're doing and why that's happening. Uh, because, you know, it's not, it's not good for the students. So, um. I think that's. Yeah, if you go to the next one, sixth grade reading, you can kind of do a similar analysis. We adopted a new reading curriculum, which, you know, that whole thing, the whole thing of, um. What I call, I guess, the reading wars, which is phonics versus whole language. And, you know, it's similar to the old math curriculum of, you know, do you learn just algorithms or do you learn the why of math? And all those things are about, it's not, you know, one side or the other. It's it's finding the right balance between the two. And a lot of times that's tricky. And I'm not sure we found the right balance. I think we, you know, I'm reading kind of too far to the whole line, which we need to pull it back. And I see. In some of the trainings for this year, there's phonics in there, so, which is good. But. Uh, anyway, I think from time to time, we need to go through and look at these, uh, kind of historical data. And say, okay, what were we doing? You know, what worked, what didn't work, and then make the adjustments. So, anyway, that's, um. That's my spiel for this this year on the, on the Sback sports and what I learned.
Uh, it looks like Director Volker Jack has her candies.
Okay.
Um, I guess my question, um, I want to. Take it to the next step, Dave. I appreciate. You know, you're, uh, pulling those charts together and pointing that out to us. And you've done it before, and you've done a great job. And how have we followed up on it? So, um. Is that something that? How how does that happen? Maybe, um. Dr. Herndon or Dr. Borshate, how how do we move? From this data that tells us some, some things worked and some things didn't to, um. You know, bringing either what was working back in or what isn't working out. How do we, how do we use this now?
I will clarify also regarding that. Looking back at some data. In twenty thirteen, Common Core state standards were also. Um, there was professional development around Common Core state standards in twenty thirteen. And so the work that was done. Seems to probably have also connected to Common Core state standards. Our elementary staff will have. A refresher tomorrow regarding Common Core state standards. And understanding the connection what happens, but what happens in the classroom. As well as curriculum alignment that Director Lysom is talking about. That you have to teach those things prior to the assessment being given. And if we're not doing that, there's going to be a misalignment. In terms of what students can demonstrate. Um, when the state assessment happens. Secondary is going to have the Common Core. Refresher according to. And so those types of conversations will then need to be followed up with, okay, so how does this impact your? Excuse me, how's this impact teaching and learning in the classroom is going to also talk to what the student work look like? What standards are we teaching to? Has the student mastered that standard? And then building on that and then spiraling spiraling the curriculum after we are intentional about looking at student work. Throughout the entire system from. Although testing starts at third grade with Sback, but looking at it from K through twelve. So that becomes a typical way of doing things.
So I guess your, your kind of connection point is is still centered around like this is reflective of. Our. A misalignment in instruction. So are there? So is that really kind of like the big, your biggest takeaway from this versus like? Particular other interventions, you know, like the, yeah, it's. Why is that kind of the the only place or the first priority place?
And I would say that because. Without doing core. Intervention comes after we've done the core. And so we will, um, assess what it is that our students know. And then add on intervention. And intervention will be for students who are. Who have yet to meet standards, who have met standards, and who are beyond standards. But we have to understand and strengthen our core first. And right now, it seems like our go-to is the intervention versus everybody understanding. What students should know, purely.
Someone says, uh, we got to get back to the basics.
Yeah.
And the other th- the thing that I was concerned about is the whole, this whole thing of. Intervention is versus coaching models, which, you know, a number of years ago, we had. You know, coaches that were a little bit intervention. I mean, there's a little bit of each. And, you know, to me, part of that is about also the. You know, pull out, push in kind of thing, which, I I mean, I I believe we're trying to get away from the pull out and more push in and. And, you know, when I've seen what I saw a number of years ago, when coaches, they had a little, some really good coaches. They were providing support for all the teachers to teach all the core to everybody. And so, you know, that's where it seems to me, we've kind of gotten away from that and have kind of gotten, you know, just, you know. Students are having problems sending out, you know, somewhere, which is not, I I mean, I'm pretty sure that's not what you're trying to do.
And that's, well, we hear two different mindsets that when you do intervention, you pull students out. No, we have to push in, but that's going to be a real mind then shift.
Right. Yeah, and I think, but I think, you know, there was a time in certain places that we did that in the past, and we need to kind of get get back to.
And the coaches will work with the adults.
Right.
Share different strategies versus, okay, let me take a boost.
Right, right.
That's a major mind shift.
Right, yeah. And then I also looking forward to you kind of at some point addressing the curriculum, because I know, I mean, we heard from the parents that was on their minds. Lucy Hawkins and how that's how we're, you know, do we need a whole new reading curriculum? Do we? You know, there, when we originally, uh, did our latest, um. Elementary reading curriculum, you know, we shortchanged, I believe, this training upfront. And so that was an issue. And so. You know, these these things are kind of all interconnected. I mean, is it the problem of the curriculum? Is it the training? Is it the limitation? Is it, you know? Need to kind of figure out where all that is, you know? And then be able to explain it to the parents. Yeah.
Um, I was, so, you know, it's, we see a correlation between, you know, our score being lower. As our school is, you know, a lower income continues. And it sucks that, you know. It determines how much we funded. And so it is very, a pattern which is getting worse. So. And, you know, if we're not funded well, then there's other assets to punch in how, and then students have to work to, because there's more of our things in grade. So that's the reality. And it's unfortunate that it is that way, but. I was gonna go back to, there was the the priority list we had for last conference. There were the eighteen seventeen or whatever, there were a list of that. And one of them was. Um, advocating for low, like low income schools, we funded more. So I don't know if other schools also play that higher on with or would be beneficial to us. Or how much impact does it make, but shaping that, where they hire on with, and having more for it.
Uh, so I wrote that one. And it got voted on. And yeah, I guarantee you that that one will be on our list. Um. The, the, the issue is, it's a political problem in Olympia. And the this, the straight out political problem is that, you know, the districts that are serving wealthy students. You know, they like the system the way it is, of course, you know, I mean, you saw, you know. And so they, they don't want it to change. And they, it turns out they have a lot of political power in them. I mean, it's just that blunt. So, you know, we need to kind of continue the fight on that, um, at that level and just keep going at, keep going at it. I actually sent some of this information just the other day up to, um. I have different strategies for trying to deal with this, but to, uh, Seattle Times writer who works for the education, uh. And occasionally they will publish some good articles on these kinds of issues. And which tends to put a little pressure on the legislature when it gets out. Now, hopefully somebody will do, you know, we'll see what. There's, they turn over writers up there a lot anyway. We'll see what happens with that. But there's all different strategies we can, uh, but it's, it's definitely an uphill battle. For sure. That's another, actually, another battle that I have with Olympia. Is there's been a couple of bills over the years and that I'm going to testify for that the. That the legislature should use an equity analysis for their bills. And they don't. And they refuse to do it. And but it's, it's another one that's on our list of, of, uh, priorities. And. Last year, I I was talking to one of the legislators who proposed it. She's a, uh, former school board member up in Bellevue and. And it turned out, this gets into the technical stuff, but the Office of Financial Management, which kind of does all these analysis, they. They were resisting strongly doing it. They didn't want to do it. And I don't know why, if they didn't know how to do it, or they, you know. I mean, it's a politically charged topic in Olympia for sure. And so, um, it just. Yeah, we just kind of keep going at it and keep going at it. And and maybe we'll get little pieces here and here and now, but. It's, uh, yeah, it's just a blunt political hard topic.
I think it's important that. To quote, the community of Tukora understands that while people will say that income. Is a determining factor. We have to keep in mind that education is a. Way out and a way to create a space at the table.
Yeah, and and this is not, uh, preordained. You know, like I said, we can. We can do things that make us above the line. And that's always within our control. At the same time, we're. Beating on Olympia to say, you know, let's, let's level the playing field again. So it's not like there's, you know, we're just helpless or something. We absolutely can do a lot.
Yeah, I would just like to, um, encourage us to get creative in. Uh, I mean, we're telling the story that because we're, uh, low income, our scores are low. And the state doesn't fund us in the way that the state should. Um, maybe those are all truths, but let's get creative in how we deal with that. In that, what would we do if we had another million dollars from the state? Let's, let's talk about what we would do with that, how we think we would improve our scores, our, our outcomes for our students. If we had that money. And let's figure out how to get that money, even if we don't get it from the state. So if what we're talking about is we need to have coaches and we need to have more. I mean, I I don't know what we would do with the money. Would we have more staff in our buildings? Would we have? Better buildings? Would we have? What would we do with it? And let's go get it. Let's, you know, if you, if we need more people in our buildings, we have a lot of people in our community that are ready to help. And we can figure out how to use the people that we have here to make the difference, even if we don't have the money. Um, I think we can sit around and whine about not having the money or being, you know, not. Not budgeted the way that we should be because of who we are, what we have. Um, but I think we can solve it if if we have the will to do that. But I have never heard us really saying. What we would do if we had more money. Um, so that would, to me, that would come out of the discussion that we just had with Dave. And the data that Dave has given us is to figure out what really would make the difference. And let's do it. That's, that's where I am.
Yeah, I completely agree. I mean, you got, there's always, you know, we are where we are, and there's lots of opportunities. And. Doctor Worshe is working on a lot of them. And, uh, but even. Yeah, thinking and thinking, and this is, this is very good for for advocacy work. If we figured out. And if we could actually support with some data, it said, okay, if we had this kind of money. You know, we've, we've, we've spent, you know, X amount, and we've got seen this improvement. But if we had twice that, then we could see this improvement for even more students. That kind of data is really valuable, I think, going down to Olympia to convince them that they should invest more in us. If we show. With a little bit of money, we're going to do all this, then, you know, so that's a good way to do it too.
So I was just like, kind of quick processing a lot, just kind of like the about, um. You know, kind of even going back to larger conversation that we touched on, various points about like. Just a a sentence of the whole, right? We know we have, we have to do a sentence, but I, I, I'm kind of like, what, what you just talked about, or what you just mentioned about. Um, you know. When we're looking at testing data, perhaps low income could be a predictor of testing data. But what does that really mean about like what young people are actually learning, right? And, you know, like going back to even like the basics of, yes, we need to become a core, actually like education is all about. Who, teaching young people how to love learning, right? How to critically think about. The world around us. So like, maybe there are different measures that we can have, um. You know, that's, yes, these are important to look at, but like, how do we really measure what success looks like for individuals in our district? Um, you know, that. You know, that we can, yeah.
Yeah, no, I completely agree. This is, this is just one set of data. And, and it's, it's, we tend to lean on it a little bit because it's. It's already in place. It's easy to pick up. But, you know, the other, um, things, uh, um. You know, creativity, uh, collaboration, all those kinds of things are really important, um, as well. And. And we need to look for for ways to to bring those out, you know, I mean, I think. You know, and it's, it's about, a lot of it's about celebrating some of the things that, I mean, last year, we had a great robotics team at Foster High School. We had a. Environmental Science Team at Foster High School. I mean, there's lots of examples of, you know. Those other kinds of things that, yeah, that we need to bring out as well.
Um, yeah, I know, it's important, you know, one thing to make sure the students. Like what they're learning and engaging them and making sure they want to learn. But it's one, it's another way to. Take into account, do they have the resources to do that even if they want to learn? Because reality is. Sometimes we can't because they have to do a lot of things that is, that in their life, they just learn isn't just, it's not a priority.
And if you really want to get out of box, maybe, you know, in terms of how we do more money, if we have a lot of students, for example, that are, have jobs. To support their families. What about if we channeled some money to them so they didn't have to work? Out of the box.
That's the kind of thinking I like.
Yeah, it's, uh, yeah, Director Volker Jack, I really like that. I guess this sounds like, how can you be really visionary about like? You know, and then we're kind of like, what would it look like in a perfect, bright world if we had all resources in the world? And then saying, okay. Here's this like vision. Um, and then now what's, what's reality? And how can we? Re-shift or whatever resources to really help us get there. Um, but if we don't have that vision, right, of these really kind of really big, bold things, then. We're just kind of chugging along in the status quo, right?
Yeah, it's always easy to to be comfortable and just go back to the status quo.
Particularly in a system like education.
Yes.
Or, you know, government worthy things.
Because there's more to, there's more than enough stuff going on just to keep us busy with that. Unfortunately.
Thank you so much for bringing, bringing this, um, insightful. All right. Uh, so brings us to our action items, um, for this evening. So let's kind of go one at a time. Um, the first one is approval of human resources staffing report. Um, the first one, the approval of human resources staffing report. Any discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor of approval?
Hi.
All right. Uh, first, yeah. Oh, sorry, okay, great. Um, okay, um, next is approval of the collective bargaining agreements. How many discussion questions?
I just wanted to check, uh, around this. Just try to have the average step increases, that too, is that a good number for the average step increases of us?
Two percent?
Yeah.
Let me go back to you.
Okay, I just want to make sure, I, I just want to make sure, I, I think I've seen you present numbers sometimes at about one point nine or something, maybe seven, okay, that's fine. All right, thanks.
All in favor of the mainly collective bargaining agreements? All right, and then lastly, approval of the overnight travel for our student representative to attend the World Conference. Um, any discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor?
Just, can I go back to the collective bargaining? Yeah, no. I like that, yes, I just wanted to say thank you for doing it in a timely manner.
Sorry, for all the work, I know it was a lot. The vote, yeah. Uh, okay, and then, all right, so that brings us to our second opportunity for public comment, um, if. Uh, you would like to offer a public comment, I don't think there's anyone in the room who's gotten open out of their name of a list. Uh, so that leaves anyone that's um, maybe online joining us, that would like to give public comment, you can enter in chat. Or raise your hand. Cool, all right, seeing none, um, we will move to adjourn our meeting.
So.
On favor? All right, thank you so much, everyone, have a well, what you mean.